I would like to call the order, the City of Sagittuck City Council Meeting for April 10th, 2023. Would you all please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? The clerk, please call the roll.
Baldwin.
Here.
Eaton.
Here.
Garner.
Here.
Leo. Lewis.
Here.
Muncie.
Here.
Stan.
Here.
Councilmember Leo informed me that she was traveling and would be unable to attend. Could I please have a motion to excuse Councilmember Leo's absence?
So moved.
Second.
Motion Stanton, second Baldwin, all in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries. For my comments, I would just like to say, welcome back to everyone. I hope you all had a great spring break, those of you that took spring break and had a happy Easter and thank you for being here tonight. With that, I will turn it over to the manager for any comments.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hello, everyone. One item on the agenda, item 18F. This is correspondence from uncommon coffee roasters. They're making a request for 15-minute parking signs. You'll see that with that correspondence comes a cover page. Staff is recommending that council does not take up this item this evening. That's why it's under correspondence. So you can ignore the cover page. You can read the contents if you want, but for tonight, I'd recommend that you ignore it. The mayor could consider this for a future agenda item if he'd like.
Very good. So there's no agenda change required for the placement of that. I do believe I saw Allison Furman join us. Allison, are you here? Great. I'm just going to offer an agenda change to the council. Allison is Representative Joey Andrews Legislative Director. And I would like to add Allison as our guest speaker for this evening. Are there any other proposed agenda changes? Hearing none, to kind of a motion to add Allison Furman as our guest speaker tonight.
So moved.
Second.
Motion Lewis, second Stanton, all in favor, please say yes.
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 Wonderful. Thank you. With that, that takes us right to item seven, which is our guest speaker. So Allison, you're just in time. Looking forward to hearing what's going on in Lansing. Yeah, please approach and name and place of residence for the clerks of minutes, please.
Hello, I'm Allison Furman. Nice to meet everyone who I have not met yet. I am Representative Andrews Legislative Director. I'm based in Kalamazoo. And I just came here today to share a quick legislative update of all the stuff that we've been working on prior to this little break that we took. So so far, they've passed the Elliot Larson Expansion Act. They've repealed the 1931 abortion ban, repealed the right to work, restored the prevailing wage, passed universal background checks, and then repealed the pension tax and expanded the earned income tax credit. So that's what we've been working on so far. Our office is open. If you have any questions, feel free to reach out and contact us anytime. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does any member of the council have any questions for Allison? I've got a couple as well. Yeah, we don't mean to put you on the spot, but since you're here.
Yeah.
Go ahead, go ahead, Garn.
Yeah, it's actually more just a, I shouldn't say a question, but I know that there was a possibility of legislation to go to kind of hybrid meetings. And I don't know if that has been introduced yet or where that is in the process. And you may not know you, but I knew that there were a number of newly elected representatives that come from municipal government that were very much in favor of that practice.
Yeah, that's something that Rep. Andrews is really interested in as well. We've had a couple of meetings about it. And if someone hasn't introduced it yet, that's something that we're looking to maybe introduce ourselves.
Okay, all right.
Wonderful. Anything, that was what I, that was my question as well, Garn. Any other questions for?
What's your last name again?
Furman.
Furman?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Great. If no other questions for Allison, thank you so much for coming to visit us tonight. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Please come back whenever you want. That concludes our guest speakers. That takes us to item eight of our agenda. This is public comment on agenda items only. So we limit our comments during this portion of the meeting to items that are on the agenda. There will be another opportunity for public comment near the end of the meeting. That is under, that is under, under seventeen on our agenda. So please, if you do comment, please limit it to agenda items only. As per standard practice, please approach the podium, state your name and place of residence for the clerk's benefit. Anyone in the audience that wishes to discuss or make comment on agenda items? I don't see any, oh, I do. CJ, please approach. Thank you. A very polite of you.
CJ Badrick, Sagittuck President. Parks, but you have a park item on there for airport park. I think you really have, we have three other park issues that really should have some priority. And the airport's sort of the shiny new thing being discussed. But and I see what's going on with the steps up to Mount Bald Head. I like that plan. I see some discussion about the downtown park. So I went and walked over it. The basketball court is horrible. The key is painted off center to the hoop. There's some definite work that could be done on that part. And then our best part is Doble Beach. We had a discussion of flags or some safety items that have seemed to have dropped off and been, there hasn't been any updates. So I'm not sure what that is. But that should be also maybe a priority above the airport property. With time left, I'll bring up some other items. So I come from private industry. There was a comment made about how it's normal for government to, a government and academia not to get competitive bids. I think it's a terrible way to do business, especially spending someone else's money, spending my money without getting some competitive bids and understanding. You may have a good company selected, but it doesn't, their history doesn't show experience in this particular thing. And the city doesn't have any history with them from what I can tell. And lastly, the, there was some commentary about treating our homeowners or our property owners like it's a natural resource and.
Is, I don't believe that's an agenda item, sir.
You're correct. That was, the first two are there.
Anyone else in the room that has a comment they'd like to offer? I'll turn it over to the folks that are participating on the Zoom call. I see no hands raised. Jamie, no, nothing. All right. That concludes our first public comment period of the evening. That will take us to item nine, our consent agenda. This will be a roll call vote. We have the regular city council meeting minutes of March 27th, 23. It is on page three of our packet. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the regular city council meeting minutes of March 27th, 2023 as presented.
I'll second.
Motion Gardner, I'll give the second to to Muncie. Any discussion on the minutes, any corrections? I see none. With that, would the clerk please call the roll?
Baldwin.
Yes.
The.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Leo's excused. Lewis?
Yes.
Muncie?
Yes.
Stan?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. We are now at item 10 of our agenda, staff reports, boards, commissions, and committees. These start on page eight of your packet and we will start with our city manager. Over to you, sir.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So infrastructure is the name of the game. Those are my highlights for the city manager report. First, an update with the MDOT, the Michigan Department of Transportation Highway Project. The managers from City Village of Douglas and the township are trying to expedite a meeting so that we can understand their traffic flow plan. So we have no updates of the moment. The only update is that we're trying to push forward a meeting so we can get you updates. Also related to infrastructure, the harbor dredging. The Army Corps should have by now conducted their pre-dredge survey. So we're looking for feedback from them on how their results turned out from that. That's in the report on page eight. Cellular service discussions. I think the mayor might have some comments on this at some point in time. But we did meet with, the mayor and I met with AT&amp;T, their government liaison, to talk about the Mount Bald Head radar project. Everything is going full steam ahead. Also, separate from AT&amp;T, I had a meeting with Comcast, their legislative affairs employee, to talk about beefing up their infrastructure in the city. Also, we talked to them about Wi-Fi, potential Wi-Fi. One thing they did push back to us immediately was the fact that they have a number of hotspots in downtown Sagittuck. So we did get some information from them about the hotspots that currently exist and how our citizens can access that as well as our tourists. So we'll get some information to you all on that. Those are the infrastructure highlights and highlights of the managers' report.
Thank you, Ryan. Any questions for the city manager?
Mr. Mayor, good evening, everybody. Without the benefit of a workshop, I do have some questions about some of the comments in the manager's report as well as the other reports. Would you like me to address those as we go through them or how would you like to?
I would suggest we do them as they go, just so.
Oh, okay.
So yeah, if you have questions for the manager on his report, feel free.
Perfect. Thank you very much. So one question, excellent work on the barricades for events. I know that's been a big topic of discussion for a couple of years. And again, it looks like there's a lot of collaboration between the communities and trying to work together to get that done. Thank you very much. The cellular service discussions with AT&amp;T, I know I saw in the report that the red line version has been returned to AT&amp;T from our attorneys. At what point will the council actually be able to see that agreement as it goes through its formation to familiarize ourselves with the terms? This is an extremely important agreement for the city and I feel like I'm not really informed in terms of what's going on with that agreement. I know it's not final, but I'd like to better understand exactly what's happening.
Sure. So the red line lease has been returned from legal counsel. That's on my desk, has not been sent to AT&amp;T yet. I need to discuss that with the attorneys to make sure that we're all comfortable with pushing that forward to AT&amp;T. I can send you the red line lease at any point in time.
Yeah, I appreciate receiving a copy. I've just become familiar with it. Thank you.
I'd like to copy too.
And also the Parks and Public Works update. I saw that there's a brief update on the structural repairs needed on the playground equipment. Maybe that can be addressed by Superintendent Herbert when he makes his report.
Yeah, certainly.
Appreciate that. Also to the Cal Lake Agreement Tri-Community, when will discussions with council be scheduled to review collecting funds for long-term asset management? That's kind of been floating around for a while. Just wondering when that's going to actually get on the calendar.
Yeah, I think that would be a good topic for your strategic planning session, given the fact that you've never actually collected funds to manage your infrastructure that you have. So that's what I would recommend.
Okay, thank you. The, I brought this up at a previous meeting, the Blue Star Highway Multimodal Path. I'd like to, and I emailed the mayor a few weeks ago. I'd like to discuss the replacing former council member Ken Trustor on that group that I think needs to be brought back to the table for council discussion, please. And then also with meetings, you mentioned meeting with Outdoor Discovery Center to review Village Squarespace. Would, I'd like to get some additional information of what's being discussed and why is ODC involved particularly? I just more curiosity and how were they selected?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, Outdoor Discovery Center specializes in outdoor playscapes. They build playgrounds that use the natural environment. They use recycled wood, wood from the, from the area. So Outdoor Discovery Center has been working and partnering with the city of Holland as well. Given the fact that the city of Sagittuck loves the nature and we need some upgrades to our playground equipment, they were a vendor that was brought in to have some, bring some ideas forward to the city. So they're not a consultant that was selected to move forward with any project, but we wanted to get some ideas from them, certainly. So connecting with any professional service provider and getting ideas.
So at this point, this is pro bono work that they're doing. I know we have a pulse on the agenda this evening, but that discussion has been pro bono.
We will be getting one bill from Outdoor Discovery Center, but it's not for the playground, new playground equipment that may come to fruition. It's for the inspection of the existing playground equipment.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Moving to item 10, two, 10A2 on our agenda, treasurer's report is Peter.
Peter should be on the line.
Peter, anything you'd like to share with us in your report?
No, I'm all set.
Okay. Well, thank you, Peter. Any questions for Peter tonight?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just want to ask, he had mentioned in his report, start the 2324 budget process after MBOR. I'm not familiar with that acronym.
March, the border review, the March border review. So the values for the town have been set now. Tax roll for the tax collection. So we know what kind of revenues we're looking at.
Okay, so what are we looking at in terms, I know it's dictated by our charter in terms of when this all has to take place. What's the schedule to start to see scheduled meetings for budget reviews and financial reviews and so forth?
Well, we could get it on the next work and we, I guess I'm ready to go in the next workshop meeting.
Yeah, I think the earlier the better personally. Thank you, Peter. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Anything else for the treasurer? All right, let's go to 10A3, planning and zoning. I, Ryan, are you going to take, where is, there you are. Are you? Any questions for Ryan on his report?
Just a comment again. Thank you so much for all the detail. Much appreciated.
Okay, great. If nothing else there, we are at 10A4, Department of Public Works Superintendent Herbert. Anything you'd like to share with us in your report, any highlights?
Yeah, please, may I just say that?
Go ahead, approach Scott. Thank you.
Yeah, so, yeah, back to the playground inspection. I was very pleasantly surprised by how that went, actually. I'm kind of trained to be a bit of a pessimist at times and just think that everything is going to fall apart. But to my surprise, Evan from the ODC is a certified playground inspector. He brought up some good points. You know, I think he gave less than a 1% chance of some sort of a failure on the playground equipment. You know, the biggest thing worth mentioning is the condition of the wood posts, but they're kind of supplemented by concrete footings by structures like the slide that twirls around. It's all got tons of concrete underneath the ground, which really anchors the structure in place. So there's a kind of a plan to keep the park open throughout the summer and buy us some time so that the Village Stairs, Village Square Study Group can do a more proper design, take our time a little bit more on that area and do it right. So that immediate need of quick getting that project done is thankfully, we have a little bit more time now. I say that, but there are some things that we need to do in the interim, just to make sure that that structure is as safe as it possibly can be. So one of the things that Evan mentioned was replacing all of the wooden posts. So easier said than done. One way or the other, we're going to get it done, whether that's through contractors or public works personnel, I'm not quite sure yet. But we're diving into it pretty deep right now to figure out our best option.
Thank you very much. If I may, I have another question on your report. You mentioned storm damage, quote unquote, downstream dam gate being broken in the closed position. Is that a privately owned dam?
It is. Yep. Eric Peterson, I've got his phone number and yeah, we had gotten a complaint over the weekend about the Peterson Nature Preserve Dam, the one that the city operates, was completely overflowing. That whole walkway, narrow walkway, dirt berm that was overflowing. That's washed out a couple of times throughout my time working for the city. So it's not all that concerning. I'd rather it not wash out, but I've rebuilt it before. It's probably a couple of day project. But yeah, that's, that's a funny agreement that I think Ryan and I will have to eventually take a deeper dive into that. Just the whole arrangement of how these two dams are constructed and.
For the record, when you say agreement.
We got a couple people's phone numbers.
I have permission to access private property. And in that case, it was kind of almost kind of comical how unfortunate it was because Mr. Peterson's dam by the mill, there's like this old ship steering wheel that's like chain driven with a gear mechanism.
I used to spin it as a kid. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, well, we went to spin that steering wheel to open up his portion of the dam to lower the water level. And like the chain was just came up out of the water like loose. And so it was like, I guess we'll deal with the aftermath, whatever it be. I don't know how else to fix this thing. So.
Thank you. Appreciate the hard work that your, that your team did during that. It sounds like it was a lot of extra hours for your team to make sure things were kept safe and water was flowing appropriately.
Our pleasure.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
And I just wanted to thank Scott. I had given Scott a text message a while back, about three weekends ago. I was sick at home with COVID. It's still going around, by the way. And I was sick as a dog and got a lot of phone calls about a giant tree being down. And it looked, it looked pretty dangerous and you guys had that cleaned up so fast. It was over a sidewalk and I was worried about some wires and stuff. And I swear within a few hours, you guys had that all off the sidewalk. So awesome job to you and your crew.
And I guess I can give you another praise too, Scott, for, for the wonderful tennis, new tennis court post. They were put in so well, very professionally, better than they've ever been put in before. I don't know if you noticed, but the pickleball or tennis courts were kind of like this. And he, they put them in a, and they did it in a timely manner because I was there at the flower shop the last few days watching it happen. But it looks really good.
Well, I guess I'll just keep up with the mutual admiration society for Superintendent Herbert. It was, it was really gratifying to see family using the new swing set at Oval Beach. It looks wonderful. And it was just made me really happy to see a kid and his family enjoying it. So thank you for doing the team and Helen to your team for sort of really getting the aesthetics right, I think, on it. And Ryan, if you could please find a way to communicate the council's gratitude for that anonymous donor. I wish I knew who it was, but if anybody knows who that person is.
We have, we have announced, we have announced it. So we can remind everyone on that. But yes, expression of gratitude for certain.
Because I mean, that, whoever the donor is, you know, made a child's day yesterday and I just think they, they should know that.
Good. I love hearing that. That took a long time to get done. So I'm glad to hear that. You know, details matter in a project like that. But that was donated by the Daniel J. Reed Foundation. And we worked in Public Works and Ryan and I, we worked in collaboration with particularly Gordon Stannis and Susan and Pete Swanson. And they donated $7,500 to help get us that nice new equipment.
I'd be happy to put my name to a letter of appreciation. I'm sure several members of the council would also like to sign that. So if, if, if staff doesn't mind that, we would love to, I think, let them know that they're already bringing joy to people. You know, it's in springtime here. You know, it's not even beach season yet, but well, maybe it will be.
And Mr. Mayor, there is a success story with the collaboration with the donors and the city of Sagittuck staff, wherein originally they came to us asking for potentially memorial benches. And we respectfully said, we are all set on benches for the moment, but would you consider? And then we inserted the swing set and we worked with them for a few months to get the design. And then we turned it over to Parks and Public Works to work out the aesthetics and eight months, nine months later, boom, the swing set appeared. And I saw some people utilizing it today and it is, it's just a great thing to see.
Wonderful.
And anytime that we can incorporate more universal accessibility with some of the designs, more power to us, in my opinion.
Absolutely. Thank you. Great.
Great. Can't wait to use it.
Yeah. Don't use the ones on the left side. You're not, you're not going to fit them. With that, we do have representative from the Sheriff's Department. I didn't want to put you on the spot, officer. But any highlights that your department would like to share? We appreciate you being here as always. Any incidents or any curious things that anybody has a question for the officer, rather than he might be able to answer? Nope, you're off the hook. But thanks for, thanks for being here. I always appreciate when you guys are here. Great. That takes us to Mr. Moxey, the engineer. Do we have John on the line?
Not sure that we do.
Okay, we don't have John on.
This came back from spring break.
Okay, fair enough. Fair enough. No problem. All right. Then that takes us out of item 10.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Garn.
I just want to just in general say how gratifying it is to see how this portion of the agenda has evolved so well. When I first joined council, none of this type of information was ever shared in written format. So not only the council had it, but that constituents could see it when they pulled up the packet. And you know, we talk about transparency all the time. And this is so very transparent on what we do here in the city and with the staff. And so it's just wonderful to see. I know I say this every week, but I really appreciate it. And I hope the constituents do as well. It's quite a bit of info.
Thank you, Garn. It's been a team effort. And indeed, I need to also, you know, give a shout out to kind of one of our parliamentarian ex officio Barry Johnson, who was kind enough to walk me through a number of different iterations of city council agendas over decades, frankly. And he was quite helpful to me in sort of proposing something that I think you all then provided a lot of value to during our strategic planning session. And is trying to create something that worked for everybody and allowed better participation and better information. So thank you for that comment. That does take us to 10B, Boards Commissions. That is the Fire District Board as item one. Dan Fox is here. So Dan, please approach and we look forward to hearing from you.
Dan Fox, City Council Rep to the Fire District Administrative Board. This is not a full report because we haven't had a meeting in between your last meeting. But it is a response to the very good question brought up last time by the mayor after his discussions with AT&amp;T related to Mount Bald Head and other things. And one of them is this is.
First, FirstNet.
FirstNet. I always think it's SecureNet, FirstNet, which is an emergency response. I don't want to say offering. I spent from the exit for 196 off of 94 until the Sagittuck exit, speaking with the chief on this subject and this subject only because he's fairly expert on it. And he had all the details and a lot of the background and whatever. One thing I thought that was just a sort of general interest is that the state invested some $25 million in components that this then inherits or gains access to by a franchise with the state. And I think Verizon had that at some point in time, or maybe they didn't. But in any case, it's, it's that kind of deal. And the, the Fire District does not have universal, have it universally incorporated in all the first responders' phones and including the chief, who is still in Verizon. The reason for that is that there were dead spots in the area, some related to Mount Bald Head, some I think otherwise related in the southern part of the Fire District, which goes down to M89. And those I think have been cleared up just under normal development. So the remaining ones relate to Mount Bald Head. They are perfectly willing, if I just get perfectly willing, in fact, anxious to move to the AT&amp;T system as soon as whatever is being done on the, on Mount Bald Head is completed and the blind spots that exist over Beach among them are gone. And he also explained to me that, and maybe you knew this, but the way the system works is, it was particularly helpful during tourism season. Because when cell phones, the system can be overloaded with users. The, in the event of an emergency, the emergency responders' cell phones have priority. And so as he said to me, Dan, if you're on the phone talking to somebody, it's just going to disappear because I'm going to be on it. So it, for that reason alone, it's a, it's a wonderful thing to have. And he fully expects that this will be, that they'll find their, you know, nail the dead spots on Mount, off of Mount Bald Head. And that'll be it and we'll make the flip. So.
Great. No, thanks, Dan. Thanks, Dan. And I'm certainly not an expert in it, but, but Tim, the AT&amp;T rep did educate me. And it's exactly as you described, the ability for first responders to kind of have priority access on the AT&amp;T network within range of that tower would be very useful. In fact, Ryan and I immediately, when we were meeting with Tim, thought that, you know, it's probably something we as a city should look at for DPW, for Scott's team. Because you can imagine in the height of summer season, if we have a heavy thunderstorm, for example, and Scott's team needs to get out and take care of everything from, you know, trash cans that have gotten launched across Oval Beach to trees that have come down. For his team to be able to have good connectivity and good telecoms could also be beneficial for our ability to provide city services. So we're quite excited about it, Dan. I'm glad to hear that the chief is equally excited about it. So thank you for that. Any other questions for, for Dan or anything? If not, we'll move on to Cal Lake.
Interurban.
Oh, sorry, Miss Gregory, apologies. Interurban.
Oh, no problem. Nothing, actually. We have our meeting, our monthly board meeting is a week from tomorrow. And so nothing since I last reported at our last, our last council meeting, other than that Phyllis Eif was on the show Sagittuck on Sunday on 92.7 The Van last week. So.
Wonderful. Thanks. Anything for Gregory? That does take us then to Cal Lake Sewer and Water Authority. I don't see Barry on the line. I don't see any hands raised. So I think we will move on. Harbor Authority, I saw some.
Yeah, April 18th will be the first meeting of the year. It'll be my first meeting on the board. We're looking forward to getting an update on the dredging. And we again appreciate what, you know, Ryan Heiss and the other leaders in our community have done to secure that grant to be able to make that happen. So we'll be getting an update on that. And there is talk, I say talk, just more of questions about whether a no-wig zone in Kalamazoo Lake would be something that, you know, you know, one of the marinas would like it. So that's something that I hope to discuss.
Wonderful. Thanks. Any questions for Lauren? I've seen it. Wonderful. I don't see a ZBA rep on the zoomed. Jamie, am I missing anybody? No, okay. Nothing, nothing from ZBA today. Second page of our agenda, Historic District Commission.
Nothing, Mr. Mayor. We did not have a quorum this month, so we'll be back in May.
Right. All right. That takes us to planning. I don't see Steve on the line. I didn't. Russ, do you want to take it?
We meet on Thursday, April twentieth. I assume, well, I don't assume. I know one of the agenda items will be discussion regarding the waterfront construction moratorium.
Okay, very good. Anything for Russ? We've got also a couple of their planners here, but if not. Tri-Community Holly is not here for that.
Excuse me.
Oh, I'm, I'm blazing through this.
Excuse me.
Apologies. Yeah. Apologies, Helen. Please.
Did meet the day after our last council meeting and I'm happy and gratified to have a couple of things to put in front of council tonight just to get some environmental assessments at the airport property in the landfill to make sure that we know what we're, what we're looking at.
All right, we'll take that up in our new business. Thank you. Sorry about that, Helen. But I don't believe we do have anybody for Tri-Community. Holly's out. And then Recycling Ad-Hoc Committee, you garnered anything on that?
Nothing since last week.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have no requests for payment. We do have item twelve with item A on approval of accounts payable, which is accounts payable in the amount of twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and seventeen dollars and seventy-nine cents. It is on page twenty-five of your packet and this will be a roll call vote. Do I have a motion to approve accounts payable?
I'll make a motion to approve accounts payable. It's presented in the amount of twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and seventeen dollars and seventy-nine cents.
I'll second.
Motion Gardner, second. Muncy, any discussion on accounts payable? Hearing none, we will do a roll call.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Leo's excused. Lewis?
Yes.
Muncy?
Yes.
Stan?
Yes.
Very good. We are now at item thirteen, introduction of new ordinances. We have none. Fourteen public hearings. We have none. Unfinished business. We have none. We are now at sixteen, new business. Item A is Resolution two-three-zero-four-one-zero-a Bodys LLC Social District Permit. You will find it on page thirty of your packet.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Motion to approve Resolution two-three-zero-four-one-zero-a adding Bodys LLC to the city of Sagatuck Social District.
Motion Stan, I'm gonna get Baldwin that one. So this will, this will be a, we'll do a discussion, but this will be a, this will be a voice vote if we get to that point. So any discussion on this at all?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just more of a general question for, as we seem to be getting additional applications for this, is it becoming, is the social district becoming more popular or is there, I'm just kind of curious as to why new, just more of a general question on why Bodys didn't participate initially and now two years down the road, they're deciding to join?
Um, Mr. My, my guess is when it first came out, I think people were wondering, you know, is this going to work? Is it not going to work? And I, I think they've noticed a few people, in fact, I've talked to Wicks, they weren't, they didn't do it right away. But they saw that people were, were taking advantage of it and they wanted to too. So I, I just think it's just catching on better. My opinion. I'm sorry.
Any other observations, thoughts?
Yeah, I know there's, there's an expense to it as well for the business. So it's not something that they just decide to do. They have to apply with the state and be approved by the state.
Great. Three hundred and twenty dollars.
Mr. Mayor, I think we have some more coming our way as well.
I had two today.
Oh, two. Underphone. So I think we can, we can mention them, right? They grab paperwork.
Yeah, that was the paperwork India, ability to tell us.
We need it tomorrow.
Okay, we'll hold off on that one then. Okay. But we have more coming.
Hold us in suspense on this one.
Very social town.
It is a very social town. Yes.
I do want to thank Congressman, Councilmember Muncy for answering that question. I just more curiosity. It was interesting. We were in Southeast Georgia for Spring Bake and we went to Savannah. I can't tell you, there's probably about three, four people that said, you know, you can drink on the streets of Savannah anywhere you want.
Yeah, I know.
And so, so then, I'm not suggesting anything at all. I'm just saying that that seemed to be a common denominator in the town of Savannah, city of Savannah. The entire town's a social district. So.
Yeah, friends who just went there and they had a good time.
Wonderful. If there's no further discussion, this will be a voice vote. And I guess I should read the motion. Do I need to read? All right. So all in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes. And you opposed? Motion, motion carries. We are now at sixteen B OAISD Summer Tax Page thirty-three. This will also be a voice vote. Who's going to take this one?
Mayor?
Yeah.
Motion to authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign and enter into an agreement between the city of Sagatuck, Sagatuck Public Schools and the OAISD for collection of the twenty-twenty-three summer tax levies at a rate of two dollars and seventy-five cents per parcel.
All right, we have motion Louis, second Stanton. Any discussion on this?
No discussion, Mayor. Just more of an update. For those that are perhaps new to this, this is an annual event that we have to actually authorize the city assessor to be able to do this. The fee is set. This is just a matter of housekeeping. So just more FYI for those that may not familiar with it.
Great. Anything else? Anything further? With that, this is a voice vote. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We're at sixteen C, additional dates for city parking lot request. Page thirty-eight, also a voice vote.
Uh, Mayor?
Go ahead.
I noticed the, the motion allows Sagatuck schools to charge for parking in the city lot during large SCA events. So that, that would, just to make sure that maybe SCA sponsored events, they do have large private events that happen there as well, like weddings and things like that. So I just want to make sure that that was clear, that they were SCA events or sponsored by SCA, not just events that were at the SCA.
Are you comfortable with these motion or do you want to offer an amended motion?
We haven't made one yet.
Well, yeah. So how do you?
Just could put SCA sponsored events.
Do you know in the discussions with Liz Wilson, if she was looking to, I know she's, you know, looking to add more opportunities to get money for the school. Was she looking for just the SCA sponsored events, like the shows, not weddings or anything like that?
That's correct.
Okay, I'm pretty sure that's what, I know Liz, I'm pretty sure that's what, not what she wanted. I just want to make sure that was clarified.
Yeah.
And then also.
Mr. Mayor, please. If I could just suggest some language, then you could just add in coordination with SCA because they wouldn't allow parking if they had private events. So you could put a qualifier on there or clarification that allow Sagatuck schools to charge for parking in the city lot during large SCA events that are coordinated and approved by the Sagatuck Center for the Arts. That way, there's no events that they would have parking for if SCA didn't approve it.
So do we need to make?
We can.
Original motion or can we start with an amended?
I can make, go ahead, Lauren. Yeah, I can make a motion. Motion to allow Sagatuck Public Schools to charge for parking in the city lot during large SCA events that are coordinated and approved by the SCA.
I'll second.
So we have a motion Stanton, second. Muncy, Jamie, did you get that?
Yes, I did.
Russ, you had your hand up. Is that, is that going to work or did you have?
I just have a couple of questions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I, I would amend the motion by saying large events. I, I don't know if that's a real qualifier that we need to have in the motion. Number two is I'm a little confused by the request because having worked in the parking lot quite a bit. The typical time for the parking lot to be used for this fundraising is from ten AM or eleven AM until, I think, eight PM, if I remember right. So, but the times I worked there, there has never been a discussion regarding not charging for the lot for people coming to the SCA events. So I'm a little confused about what the difference is here in terms of what we're not doing today and what we're going to be doing with this motion.
Um, I just, so there's some opportunities that are like Wednesday nights, Thursday nights, when we don't have that staffed by anyone, any of the parents. So these are in addition to. So she has a list going of all the dates that she normally uses. She's asking for additional dates that, you know, there would be plays going on, you know, musicals going on.
Understood. Thank you.
Add that.
Thank you, Councilmember Stanton. So.
It sounds like we're comfortable with Mayor Protem's motion. Would you like the clerk to read it again?
Yes, please. So thank you for the clarification. So they want to add like a Wednesday. It's normally Friday, Saturday, Sunday typically. They want to add a Wednesday or Tuesday.
They don't already do.
I'd feel a little more comfortable if we had the specific events that they're envisioning using it for the specific purpose. I think that'd be great for the public just to know would be my only concern.
And I would, I would just say that we can go in ahead and approve this and then ask Liz to get us the schedule of that.
We, we do have a motion. We do have a motion on the table.
Appreciate it.
Relative question, Ryan, a relative. The, the bank parking lot. I'm sure they'll want to make up a little bit of money because I don't, will they be using it this summer or not?
They do plan to use it this summer.
Okay. And, and is there works with talking to the Huntington Bank? We talked about talking to them to make sure we can secure that for the school again and, and for our public parking.
The school is working on that.
Awesome.
They've got it.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I can give an update on that. I've been in direct contact with Huntington Bank as, as Liz. The bank has yet to close the deal on the parking lot. They have said to Liz, because the agreement is between the school and the park and the bank, not the city. And they've said that if the bank has not closed on this by May thirty-first, they will execute an agreement with this, with the schools for the use of the parking lot. They're also going to put a good word in with the financial institution that is looking to purchase the property to continue using it for parking. That, that's essentially where the deal is.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, I, I think we have possibly two pass here. One is either to, well, to vote on the motion as it stands or the Mayor Protem could withdraw or amend her, her motion. So I think, I think that's where we are.
I'd just like to call the question.
Very good. Very good. This is a voice vote. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? No. You know, unanimous approval of that one. So we can move on to sixteen C. Additional dates for city lot parking request.
Just did that.
Yeah. Oh, that was them. Sorry, my bad.
I'm sorry.
You did a great job with that one.
That one, that one, yeah, that was hard. We're at D now then, sorry. Recommendation for the STR consultant, page thirty-nine. This will be a roll call. Ryan Cummins, please approach. Thank you. And I will note that we have our task force chair, Holly Anderson, in the audience. So Holly, you may get some questions, but go ahead, Ryan. You kick it off.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, City Council. As you all know, you established a short-term rental task force and part of your direction staff is that you wanted the short-term rental task force to receive assistance and facilitation by a professional planning consultant that was approved by City Council. So on February twenty-seventh, staff issued a request for professional services. We received one response back, proposal, rather lengthy proposal from McKenna Associates. City Manager Heiss, myself, and short-term rental task force chair, Anderson. And I interviewed McKenna Associates recently in a very good interview with them. We wanted to make sure that they fully understood the projects, made sure that they understood what our expectations were, what your expectations were, what the, the purpose of the work was. We had a few follow-up questions, which they provided some supplemental materials to us via supplemental letter. City Manager Heiss, Chair Anderson and I discussed the interview, the materials that were submitted to us and all of us are comfortable recommending to City Council that you approve a professional services agreement with McKenna Associates. Budget-wise, I've confirmed this with the treasurer, your appropriations for this fiscal year. I had set aside twenty-five thousand dollars for planning consultant review of zoning ordinance. I've confirmed with the treasurer that those funds are still available. By the time the task force works kicks off, probably in, in May, we're looking at a couple of months towards this fiscal year. And as you know, there's certainly going to be some, some costs in reviewing your waterfront development ordinance as well that we need to come out of that budget. But play a budget for a couple of months of services. So before you this evening is actually the, the updated, it made it into your packet just in time. City Attorney Patterson did review the professional services agreement. He had a couple of additions related to termination clause and kind of a standard of care to be added in, and this one other clarification. So all that's before you this evening for your consideration. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Very good. Before we move on, do we have a sample motion before we enter deliberations on this?
Yeah, Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
Motion to approve entering into professional services agreement with McKenna Associates after review of the agreement is complete by the city attorney, which it is. So. Let me scratch that. Let me do that again. Motion to approve entering into a professional services agreement with McKenna Associates.
Second.
So we have a motion Louis, a second Baldwin. I'm opening it up for discussion.
I wanted to say I, I read through the packet twice. I also have some friends who've lived in municipalities where McKenna has been hired and they spoke very highly of them, which is, I appreciate it. So the references on page sixty-eight, their experience with short-term rentals on page seventy, starting on page seventy-five, and then a very in-depth agreement starting on page seventy-eight. I appreciate the time and I feel very comfortable with McKenna.
I just, I wish that we had more choices. I know that you reached out to three companies when, when we started this about a month and a half ago. And you didn't receive a call for one. I just would like to have more options. And this company looks very credible and they, it looks like they've done great work. And I did spend some time looking into them, their website and their company. And I, I think they're very capable of doing a job like this. I just would like to have seen a, a comparison with a couple, at least one or two other consultants. So I'm a little uncomfortable with going with just the one choice of a company that has a great record of working with municipalities on, on zoning and lots of, a lot of master plans and things like that. But this is the first time they are doing a study on short-term rentals. Is that correct?
That's correct. No, that's not.
No, it's not. They have done a study like this before?
Yeah, so they're, they included a supplemental letter. That's something we wanted them to kind of make more clear. We had a lot of discussion with them about their short-term rental experience during their interview.
Okay.
And so we asked them to provide a little bit more detail and to you, because we knew that you would probably be asking about this, so want a little bit more detail. And so they submitted a supplemental letter that kind of talked about where they've done specific short-term rental work at.
On that, page seventy-five.
Seventy-five. Yeah. Sorry, I don't have the page numbers.
I, I'd like to include Holly in this discussion. Holly, if we'd like, since you, you were, worked with Ryan on interviewing or reviewing this at least.
Right. And, and I know CJ made the, the point earlier. Yeah, I mean, I think we all would have liked to have seen more proposals. And their initial draft did not stress their short-term rental expertise as much as we learned about it in the call with them. And then their supplemental materials call it out on page seventy-five, they list the communities. So, you know, being a former consultant, what I do appreciate is when people didn't have capacity, they didn't bid it. I mean, because you don't want to hire a firm that doesn't have capacity. I think the team had very relevant experience. We had spoke with four people and all of them had short-term rental experience, whether it was doing the research or working on the zoning. So, you know, in an ideal world, we'd have more people. I think the, the trade-off is do we want to delay and, you know, personally, I, I think everybody's anxious to kind of dig in and, and I think they can get the data we need. They've got great zoning experience. They can access best practices. So I think they would, I think they would be good.
I certainly don't want to kick the can down the road, but I just want to make sure we're going the right way.
I, you know, it, the Ryans and I, I mean, I think we all feel very comfortable with them. And, and I, I do kind of know when clients or consultants are BSing, having, and on that side of the table. And I, they're, you know, they were, they had great answers to questions and weren't BSing us.
Thank you, Holly.
Ryan, in your experience, is there a vast number of these consultants that have experience in short-term rentals that we're missing out on or is this?
Big deal right now in the country. I think a lot of companies are out there.
Yeah, I bet some of the problem, I mean, I'm sure the one that didn't return our calls is just slammed and I think they're a smaller firm. And there's certainly, I'm sure if we went to Chicago or, you know, went outside of this area, we could probably get somebody. I think the benefit of McKenna, they are Michigan-based. They've got a great network in the state. They're the biggest firm. So they've got, if, you know, if they need expertise that one of the four people on our core team don't have, they know who to, to call. So I think actually going with a bigger firm that's Michigan-based, been in business a long time, would serve us better than like going to Um, been in business a long time would serve us better than like going to a Chicago or, or getting outside of our area.
Great, thank you for that, uh, Holly and Ryan, uh, did you want to add something, Ryan?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll just add, you know, I, I think there's a lot of other, like, firms that have maybe smaller teams or, um, or, 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 or single. You know, consultants, they're, they, as, as Chair Anderson said, they're, they're bringing a, I think, a team approach, um, which we thought, uh, could add a lot of, um, value. Um, you know, the, the tricky part about the short-term rental piece is that not every community uses a consultant, so some are just using their regular, you know, planning and zoning staff that may have. Um, you know, that expertise to, to be able to do that, that work at that point in time. Um, so not everybody's using a consultant and they kind of explained too that for a while, short-term rental changes in some communities were also kind of. On hold or being held back because there was a lot of conversation about the, the pending legislation. And so a lot of communities were kind of taking a wait-and-see approach, similar to what Saga perhaps has done, so. Um, that's a factor too as far as, uh, you know, different communities or, or different firms maybe having certain levels of experience.
Right.
Just something specific, um, when I was reading through, you know, their proposal, there were, um, you know, just different price tags and they were, you know. Pricing out different things that they were offering. One of those was there was three choices for community engagement and there are three different approaches and then three different price tags. Are we deciding that, are you guys deciding that, has that been decided?
So, you know, uh, discuss this a little bit with our, our city attorney, it's that, you know, obviously the, the, the task force itself is an advisory group, they don't have spending power, so. I think once it's fleshed out more and the group starts meeting and it's, it's kind of known what kind of community engagement is, is best. If there's any of these, uh, additional or optional services that are, are needed to do the work. That we would be, you know, coming back to the city council to say, hey, these are the additional items that we'd like to spend money on and, and get your approval to do that. Uh, and then we also are going to be looking at budget for next year and, and looking, and some of that may be fleshed out during budget season, we can include that in your, your next years appropriations as well.
Okay, and then just that, um, it was looking like it was about an eight to nine, was it eight-month kind of proposal that it, that's what it was looking at?
So, some of the work, uh, obviously, short-term rental task force, their work's going to be, you know, hot and heavy at the beginning and then you'll be joining that, that work. Um, but then. It ma- it may take a little bit longer than that, um, and, and some of that extra time may be time working through the planning commission and city council processes with any potential changes as well, so. But I, I, we've discussed that, that timeline related to, um, time with the task force is really at that, that six-month mark and then. It takes time to get changes, potential changes through your planning commission with public hearings and then ultimately the city council, so that's where some of that extra time comes in.
That makes sense.
Yeah. Uh, I think, go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you, um. M- McKenna's a, a very skilled company, um, and I've been a consultant too, so I've written these RFPs, I've responded RFPs. So I have experience with this as well. Um, as mentioned by council member Muncie as well as by the resident, I am a, I am concerned about the fact that the short-term rental experience with this company seems to be light. Um, and they said in the comment that their work has been just discussion with communities and they've adopted a wait-and-see approach to short-term rental ordinances. I'm asking evidence that they've actually taken a community through the process that Saga Tech's envisioning. Was that, was that a dr- was, have they taken communities through the process that Saga Tech is actually engaging with?
Right, yep, so they, they talked a lot about chicken mean township and the work that they've done with them, there's a lot of communities that they were taking through the process and as they went through the process, we're finding. Pushback, challenges, concerns and, and it was getting to a point where those communities were like. You know what, I think we just, we had some discussion, I think we're going to leave it there for now and so that's kind of what they were finding in their experiences, so they were working through these, this type of a process with other communities.
Thank you, I just, thank you, I was also, um, how were the three consultants selected?
So, um. Professional services, a professional services piece of our, of your charter doesn't require like a competitive bidding type process. Um, so. We prepared a, uh, request for professional services that outlined exactly the, the work that, that was needed, what we're looking for, a lot of it really was taken direct wording from your actual short-term rental. Task force, uh, resolution. Um, we consulted with our current consulting planner to say, hey, we want to go to folks that, that would know and be able to do this type of work and do it well. Um, do you have any recommendations for us? Um, he recommended, um, Williamson Works, um, and McKenna as two possibilities and then. Uh, Beck and Raider was also raised by, you know, city council as a potential firm that we should take a look at based on prior work that they had done in another community and so we sent it to those three, uh, organizations.
Thank you, uh, uh, just last comment is, um. I'm so excited about the short-term rental task force, I, I, I think it's an absolutely great idea. I am a little troubled by this proposal, not the company itself, they're a very skilled company. Um, there are certain projects in the city that I could see them being a very good fit for, I'm not sure the short-term rental task force support is a good fit for us. For this company, um, also to the competitive bid, um, I would have liked to see at least one or two other bids along with us to be able to compare. So.
Any other comments from council? Um, I'll, I'll make a few observations, um. Yeah, it would certainly be ideal to have multiple bids for this. Um, to my mind, this shows that, uh, this is a hot topic and there's not a lot of bandwidth available. Uh, to competi- to communities that want to tackle this issue. It also sounds like some communities have sort of given up on it, um, which is, you know, that's their decision. I'm comfortable with staff's recommendation, I've, I trust our staff and I trust Holly's leadership and I trust the, the task force, um, to be able to tell if this work product is valuable and I think it's. Frankly, to, to get this group moving quickly. Uh, and to get them some common data that hopefully they can all agree on as a baseline to work from. Uh, I'm in favor of, of moving forward, so if there's no other discussion, I'm prepared to call the question and it will be a roll call. Please, please call the roll.
Baldwin? Yes. Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
No.
Lewis?
Yes.
Muncie?
No.
Stan? Yes.
Motion passes.
Thanks, Ryan.
The next item on the agenda is sixteen E, airport ESA phase one and site use proposal, page ninety-four of your packet, it will be a roll call.
Mr. Mayor, what, yes, this, uh, this item comes out of your Parks and Public Works Committee that you established. Um, not everyone understands that the city owns two chunks of land that lie outside of the city boundaries. One is the landfill property, as we call it. Um, and the other is the airport property. Airport property is actually two parcels, but it's roughly a hundred and seventy acres. Um, so the Parks and Public Works Committee discussed, um, starting to look at those pieces of property for potential uses. We've talked about this, you talked about this as a council before, the fact that this has been done back in two thousand and nine. Uh, there was a report that was submitted, um, of po- possible uses of, of that property. But the Parks and Public Works Committee voted to bring to you all, um, two, two beginning items. Uh, one, one of those items is related to an, an environmental site assessment, so phase one environmental si- site assessment. It's the same type of site, site assessment that would be involved with purchasing a commercial property, they, they, they study the property, they say if there's any environmental issues that you need to be concerned of. They, they review historical records, uh, to see what the prior uses were, uh, which is, is super important. Um, and so, uh, the Parks and Public Works Committees thought that would be a great start. Um, and I agree with that because at some point in time, whether it be one year, two years, five years, ten years, twenty years. City will probably utilize that property in some capacity, it would be sad if you didn't. Um, and so you have two proposals, both related to environmental site assessments. The landfill property is wildly curious to me. Uh, I want to know who used to operate the landfill, what the ongoing requirements are, uh, for, for managing that. Um, those, those must exist somewhere. Um, and so tho- those are two proposals, um, in the sample motion, the third one is from the Outdoor Discovery Center. Which is looking at the potential, uh, environmental sensitivities and environmental improvements that could be made to the airport property. Uh, in, in particular, um, and so you have a proposal related to that. I will pause and, Mr. Mayor, if it's appropriate, you may want to call on the chairperson of the Parks and Public Works Committee to add any additional.
Yeah, is there any more context, Helen, that you'd like to offer before we, uh, see if there's a sample motion to, uh?
First, I want to thank, uh, uh, manager Heiss for, uh, covering that well. Um, our Parks and Public Works Committee is excited about, um, really just seeing what the opportunities are before we do anything, we really need to have a, a good handle on. What, what we have invasive species, um, things we need to worry about, uh, environmentally. Um, a lot of lore about, you know, they used to use it as a shooting range, is there lead out there that we need to be concerned about? So really just to get the lay of the land, literally get the lay of the land and, and as far as any environmental concerns. And, uh, it's just something that really needs to be done as a city before anything gets done, seems like a very basic first step.
Thanks, Helen, um, I'm, I'm willing to entertain a motion for further discussion.
Mr. Mayor, move to approve the two proposals submitted by Fleyce and Van Abreak for environmental assessments of city-owned property not to exceed ninety-six hundred and fifty dollars. And also to approve the proposal from the Outdoor Discovery Center in the amount not to exceed sixty-five hundred dollars.
Second.
Motion, Louis, second stand, uh, opened up for discussion.
If I may, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Um, so, the Tri-City Recycling Committee. Uh, actually started this work several years ago when we first got started and looking at that airport property, because we were very, Ryan knows, very passionate. About possibly composting and utilizing all the tree and leaves and stuff like that, so. Uh, we actually started looking at that and it's then warped and moved over to the Parks and Public Works because. The TRC is basically, you know, finished its purview, so it's, it's nice, we brought the Outdoor Discovery Center, we had a number of different entities out there. Giving us all kinds of insight and it was a wonderful surprise at that time that they had already done, uh, an extensive report way back in the day. So, um, it's nice to see this moving into that group of citizens who we've brought on board, who are very capable. And, and very impassionate about where we go with, um, that property that we've had in our hands for many years, so it's a nice, it's a nice move forward. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to address, you know, something that CJ brought up, just the fact that, you know, uh. Some of our parks are higher as far as priorities, we, we know that during the strategic planning, we've, we've prioritized Mount Bald Head repairs and. You know, getting cell service out at Oval Beach and we've prioritized things. Um, but this is a great first step, there's been a lot of people interested in the property and coming up with ideas. And things that could come from whatever does get developed there. So I mean, that's something else you have to consider, that there could be any number of things that could come from what ends up at the airport property. And this is a great first step and I appreciate, um, the Parks and Public Works, um, committee working on this just to get us there.
Other thoughts from the council?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, um, I do want to ask a few questions about this, again, appreciate all the effort that the Park and Public Works Committee is making on this. Um, I do wonder how the airport property became a priority. Uh, this did not come up in our strategic survey of the community, um, it has been, as was mentioned, out of sight, out of mind, as a matter of fact, even the engineer in his report. Has said that, um, there is no design future use for this property, quote unquote, as well as in the manager's report. Um, let me find it here, um, from, from a staff perspective, the top two priorities are Mount Bald Head. Driven by the public-private partnership with AT&amp;T for cellular improvements and new restaurant facilities. Um, I, I, I am not seeing the airport property, uh, being a priority for spending for the city. Uh, any monies that are spent on the airport property, even as for an ESA, uh, comes at the expense of infrastructure and our roads. Uh, that's sixteen thousand one hundred and fifty dollars that I could see easily going into a contract to paint the streets. Strip the streets, I know that's something that the engineer's been working on as well as a, perhaps a, um, um, other equipment that the city staff may decide is more needed for the infrastructure. I've just not seen the need for this.
Any further discussion from council?
I have to agree with Russ, um, uh, unfortunately, um, I, I really think that, that we may need to make our priorities and focus on doing maybe one project at a time. And, 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 uh, uh, it's, it's great to keep growing and expanding, but, uh, again, roads, roads, roads. And I don't know if anybody drives around our roads here in town, but every time I see a nickel go, whether, uh, it's, you know, whatever a nickel is going, um, I just keep thinking roads. And they're getting worse, um, I'm taking drives out at roads like, to talk again about Bridge Street, we had, uh, Mr. Wasken talk about that street, I took a ride out there. Um, I, anybody, right up on the hill, right here downtown, go across the, it's just really, really bad and, and I see that. You know, if this was a couple of studies, environment studies, it might have cost two or three grand, that's one thing. But when I'm seeing numbers go up to eight, nine grand on something like this, I, I just think it would be best if we could focus on the things that need to be done rather than creating new things.
Thanks, we're, I would, I would have to say, um, I agree with your comment about the roads. It was shocking to me driving back on Friday night after, you know, a week in South Carolina, Tennessee, Kentucky. Indiana. I sure knew it once we crossed the border into Michigan. I mean, it was stunning, it was stunning, I'd been on some of the most treacherous mountain roads in the Smoky Mountains during the storm we had. And there was nothing to compare crossing the state line into Michigan. Our roads, as our governor has said, um, they need some help. Um, having said that, um. This was actually one of the, the airport property was one of the first, um, properties I visited, uh, at the request of other council members and other members of the community. Um, uh, you know, back in twenty twenty-one, I believe. Um, it is a park, parks are a priority, infrastructure is a priority, has, has been noted. Um, Ryan and I and others have, have visited these sites with people like, uh, the electric utility. And there is interest in things like a possibility of a community solar array at, uh, the, the old landfill. But to do that, we need to be able to show these infrastructure companies that it's safe and feasible to do the work. It's also, I think, helpful, given the large remit of our Parks and Public Works Committee, to provide them with some important scientific data. Um, so they can focus their deliberations in the appropriate manner. Uh, this is not a proposal to take the airport property or the old landfill site in any particular direction. I see it as a proposal and, and an investment in important data so we can make informed decisions as, as a council.
It also assists us in our ability to get grants, we are not able to apply for any grants without an environmental study.
It's a very good point, Helen, thank you for that, so I'm personally in favor of doing this, I understand the concerns of my colleagues on council, they're valid concerns, but I do think. Uh, this is investment in data, uh, opens up the opportunities that, you know, we hope to be able to capitalize on down the road. And the longer we wait, the longer these things will take and we may miss grants, we may miss other opportunities, so. Um, I, I do see this to my mind as part of our strategic planning, which identified both parks and infrastructure. These both have implications for parks and infrastructure in my mind. Um, any further discussion, but council, go ahead, Russ.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I, I, I would, um, it was interesting to read the McKenna, uh, proposal because included in that proposal was a study they did for Park Township's Airport. Interestingly enough, they would be an ideal fit for a future use study of the airport property, in my opinion. The sixteen thousand one hundred and fifty dollars, in my mind, is critical for our budget to go to the roads and the other improvements that are more prioritized and have been prioritized by the council and our residents. Um, I just, and again, in our, I'll go back to Fleece and Vanderbrink's report, quote unquote, your planned future use has not been determined. So if we're thinking about applying for grants when the future use hasn't, hasn't even been determined, it's, it's almost in my mind, the cart before the horse.
You apply for grants in like two years.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, go, go ahead, Garnet, you, you, you.
So I'd like to remind everybody that, um, several years ago, I think it was twenty eighteen, maybe twenty seventeen, city council applied for a grant and set aside five hundred thousand dollars as a match for a potential grant. The city did not receive, and that was related to parks and public works, specifically, uh, Oval Beach, the Mount Bald Head and whatnot. We did not get that grant, but that five hundred thousand dollars was set aside. And we as a council agreed last year, I believe it was, that that money would stay set aside for parks and public works specifically. So that money's not being taken from anywhere, it's not being taken from roads, it's already been designated and set aside by council many, many years ago. So that's what its purpose is, is to be used to help us and to help the Parks and Public Works Committee and Parks and Public Works Department do their jobs. So with that, I'd like to call the question.
Thank you, Garnet, that, that, that explains something to me that I didn't know.
All right, we, 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 we have a motion, uh, to vote on, it will be a roll call. Uh, clerk, please call the roll.
Baldwin? Yes. Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
No.
Lewis, excuse, Louis?
Yes.
Muncie?
No.
Stan? Yes.
Motion carries. Uh, that concludes new business, we are now at, uh, item seventeen, public comments, this is open to any item. Uh, per our normal rules, please limit your comments to three minutes. Uh, and please identify yourself by name and residency or, you know, where you live, so, uh, so the clerk can get, uh, appropriate minutes for this meeting. Anyone in the audience that wishes to offer a public comment? Dan, please approach.
Thank you, Dan Fox. Sorry, I'm speaking as Dan Fox, not.
Speaking as Dan Fox, not as the Fire District guy. One piece of information I'd like to see, that I think is a key piece of information from the council or from the city or whomever. On those properties, airport property and whatever the other landfill property is. I'm quite sure, I've never set foot on either of those pieces of property, nor could I find them with both hands or a car or whatever. But. And I don't know, if you, or you mentioned commercial real estate, first steps, kinds of things like, like you're going through tonight. I'd like to see a real estate appraisal for what that land is worth. It's a city asset. We sell city assets all the time, Scott sells his trucks when he's finished with them, we know what they're worth, we don't sell them if they don't hit a certain price. We don't know what that land is worth. And I'm not saying that means therefore you should sell it. But I don't think you can make a lot of other decisions not knowing that piece of information. You know, if, for example, Perrigo wants to build a distribution center and is willing to pay, you know, fifteen million dollars for that property. It's a piece of information you need to have before we need to have, the city needs to have, the citizens need to have, it's their property. So I, cart, horse, whatever, I just add that to the list of. I guess horses. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much, Dan. Anyone else in the audience who wishes to make a comment? With, with that, I will turn it over. Well, Mr. Cherick. Mr. Cherick, please approach. Please, please state, please state your name and place of residence for the record, sir.
No, I'm kidding, actually Keith Cherick, Sagatuck resident. And I'm going to completely talk about something new for you. So I'm asking the council to initiate a program called No Moe May, Low Mo Spring. And it's interesting, so, and I, I was up outside, I might pass my three minutes. But so I was outside Madison, Wisconsin last year in a couple of communities and they had. In front of a lot, so, you know, well-to-do community like Sagatuck, but not a tourist community. And a lot of lawns had, they were hot, and they had flowers and they had, but it's actually a, a program that was put together. By a group of, it, there's a website called BeeCityUSA.com. And it's about promoting bees in the spring, so they pollinate everything from flowers to trees to grass. Well, not necessarily grass, but so I'm going to read what I took off the website. So lawns cover forty million acres or two percent of the land in the United States. Making them the single largest irrigated crop that has grown in the United States. They're mowed, raked, fertilized, weeded, chemically treated, watered. They suck up time, money and other resources. They provide very little benefit to wildlife and are often harmful. Grass-only lawns lack floral resources and nesting sites for bees and are often treated with pesticides. Herbicides, insecticides, fungicides that harm bees and other invertebrates. So why do we mow less in the spring? Because it's the start of the growing season and it's a crucial time. For hungry, newly emerged native bees. Their floral resources are hard to find, especially in urban and suburban landscapes. By allowing it to grow longer and letting flowers bloom, your lawn can actually provide nectar and pollen to help your neighbors thrive. A huge frequently asked question section on the Bee City USA site. So I'll give you a few examples of their questions, but I won't give you their answers because they were. So how exact question, how exactly will allowing my lawn to grow benefit pollinators? Another one is, will letting my lawn grow be great for bees? Another one is, I didn't realize there are so many types of bees, how many are there? Actually about thirty-six hundred in the United States. I gave you that answer. What can I do to educate my neighbors and passersby about my yard choices and how they benefit pollinators? So those are a bunch of questions. So I know the council doesn't have a separate environmental committee, which we wait call, because then you could talk about water. Sewer, you could ta- talk about all that stuff, but that's irrelevant. So I know you don't have a separate environmental committee, so I asked, came in front of you this morning, this evening, thank you. To not enforce. The only ordinance I could find on cutting grass, which I've actually almost been fined about. Is four point zero eight, the cutting of grass and weeds.
Yeah.
Duty of occupant or owner.
I'm afraid your three minutes is up.
Oh, that's cool. It was just a thank you.
Thank you Keith. Wonderful. Oh, thank you, thank you. I don't see any other takers in the audience. So I think that we've reached the time to go to the Zoom. I'm going to go, Jamie, I'm going to go upper left and just, you know, cross. Suresh, you're the first hand that I've seen, so please just announce yourself and your residency for, for Jamie's benefit.
Yep, thank you very much, Suresh from six forty-seven Butler Street. I'm not sure I can beat that, although I do love saving bees, but I also like cutting my grass. So, yeah, so listen, I, I too wish that we had additional RFP responses relative to the short-term rentals. Although McKenna does seem to have, you know, good short-term rental experience or decent short-term rental experience. If you Google McKenna and short-term rental, there is a little bit of information out there to anybody that's listening that wants to kind of go and. Read more about how they've helped other communities and partnering with them in some of these analyses. The city of Flint is an example of this, like I think they parted ways with McKenna at the middle of last year, specific to the work around short-term rentals. This being said, regardless, the motion is passed and I'll support whatever decision is made. But again, I, I just want to make sure that as we partner on this with, in conjunction with the short-term rental task force. My only request is that council members and the planning commission and the short-term rental task force. That we treat Sagatuck uniquely and not do something that another community has done, just because they've done it. The public voice has been very loud regarding a moratorium on short-term rentals. You know, and I would just hate for a company that isn't part of our community to come in and make a recommendation that we just follow because it's been done somewhere else. We're a unique community, we have unique needs. And all of our voices and you are all of our resources that have been voted in to represent this community as a whole. And the public has shared feedback that, you know, at times this process has felt like things were being decided before public opinion has been sought. Now, I would just want to make sure that we continue to encourage that you pay very close attention. Before any future decisions are made and that you allow adequate time to get, you know, public feedback before decisions are made that ultimately impact people's circumstances. So just continuing to maybe share that, that message across all of these forums. Thank you.
Thank you, Suresh. I don't see any other hands raised on the Zoom. If, if you do have a comment and you're on the Zoom, please toggle the button to raise your hand. I'll give you all a few moments. With that, I, Jamie, do you see anybody with a hand raised on the Zoom? Okay, with that, with that, I am going to close public comment. And that takes us to correspondence, you have the correspondence that the manager mentioned earlier. So we are now at item nineteen, council comments, I think I started with Garn last meeting, I'm going to start with Helen tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I also want to say thank you to everyone who, who came, I see people from planning and from my PPW and it's really gratifying to have you here. And I feel like we're getting some good forward momentum and a lot of things that came before us tonight. And that's, that's the reason I joined council, is progress and forward momentum, and I saw a lot of it tonight, and I just want to say thank you.
Just want to give a shout out to the Sagatuck Douglas Art Club, they're celebrating their seventieth year. And tomorrow night at Jay Petter Galleries, six thirty to eight thirty PM. If you're an artist, you can find out what a gallerist wants, Julie Petter will facilitate an open discussion about what it takes for an artist. To get represented by a gallery, so just a little shout out to them celebrating seventy years. And they have, I believe, almost tripled their membership in the last couple of years, reported by Bessie York. So it's really become quite a strong gathering of folks that help make our town the art coast that it is.
I would just like to say I'm really encouraged by tonight's agenda and everything we have going forward. The short-term rental task force, I'm lucky to be involved with it and I look forward to those meetings going ahead. Holly and Ryan, your work interviewing McKenna and everything you did with that. I just, you know, appreciate you guys being involved because, you know, you're the experts, you're helping us through this process. And it might not be perfect, but we're moving forward. And, and I agree with Suresh that we are a unique community. And we have very unique things that go on in our town, historically speaking. So we've always been a tourist town, it's different than a lot of areas. And I just look forward to the progress being made. I'm also very excited about what's happening at Mount Bald Head with AT&amp;T and the public-private partnership. We might actually have cell service at Oval Beach. And to boot, we're getting new bathrooms, that's how public-private partnerships work and they work. And I'm just, I'm looking forward to Parks and Public Works, you guys are doing a bang-up job with all that you have on your plate. Because it's a big agenda that we kind of tasked you with. And I'm just looking forward to, you know, the roads, I agree. We do have some projects going forward though, and we're going to see some improvements on some of the roads. I wish we could improve all of them at once, but we have to pick what we can pick per year and we did what we could do with that. So not all winners, but we're doing the best we can. So I just appreciate that, we're really tackling some of these projects.
Thank you, I, I just want to comment again on my vote on the short-term rental consultant. I remain fully supportive of the task force goals. I remain very supportive of the community's efforts to address an issue that is needed to be addressed for a while. My no vote was strictly based on my impression of this company's fit for our needs. Doesn't change my position on the need to do this, I will be working as a planning commissioner, as a council member, support this process. And with the short-term rental task force, I look forward to the work. The manager mentioned something about the landfill, I can tell you who used to manage the landfill, Blocks Refuge, Refuse, John Block and Alice Block. Used to manage that, I used to sit out there and shoot rats at the landfill, and this was back in the day before Sagatuck had garbage service. Literally Saturdays, my dad and I would hop in the pickup, we'd throw the garbage in the back and we'd drive out and take, take garbage out to Blocks. Blocks dump, basically what it was, and you pay a few bucks and you jump, stop and talk with John and talk with your neighbors and stuff. So that's kind of old school Sagatuck, but that's what was managed there. Now, when Blocks sold it, I think they sold that off to, I don't remember who, but anyway, long story short, I'm not sure who actually mediated that. And sealed it up, so that would be a question, I'm not sure who would know that, I'm sure it's somewhere in the city record. So I do want to comment on Mr. Cherick's comments, my yard is in the progress of trying to do that. So your information was very helpful this evening, I'm very interested in, and something that we're trying to do with our yard too, and I'd like to see more. So thank you.
All right. I want to follow up on Lauren's comments on the agenda and it's, I wrote here at some point in time. That it's nice that we can all, especially our staff, walk and chew gum at the same time. There's so many different projects going on and it's actually very possible to do many things and get many things moving at the same time. And get some good feedback for our city so that we can make some wise decisions and apply for grants. Venetian's planning is coming along really well, a great group of people, the Rotary Club. You know, a lot of folks have a perception of Rotary of what it used to be back in the day. And our Rotary here in the area is, is pretty evenly matched of men and women. Which is very atypical of what Rotary used to be like. And we've taken it all on ourselves to make sure that we are truly living a life of service. And by taking on the Venetian Festival, we, we feel very confident that, that we'll have a really stellar event. We're getting some great support from a lot of the, the new businesses, the new, whoever, I can't remember right now. Skips my brain, who took over Town Marina? Thank you, Safe Harbor very much on board, and then the boat rentals as well. So it's, it's looking like it's going to be a really well-supported event, which is what is very much needed, so.
Thank you, I'll wrap things up. Keith, this has nothing to do with your comments on, on No Moe May. And, and I do hope you will give me some credit for investing in a battery-powered lawnmower. I mean, hopefully I get some street cred in your books with, with, with the battery-powered ego mower thing. But, you know, my other half spent a good portion of today out in the sun cleaning up the yard. Getting the, the yard wastes out for, for Scott's team to, to, to take to the airport property. And I saw a lot of my neighbors and a lot of other members of the community doing that. You know, it was one of those days today where you can feel Sagatuck coming alive for the summer. And, you know, it just reminds me that, you know, when we, you know, take care of our properties. And, and we, and we, you know, our neighbors take care of their properties and, and we all kind of work together to kind of create that atmosphere here in town. Of, of, you know, well-kept houses, well-kept yards, and, you know, with, with different heights of grass, of course. You know, because people, some people are into the wildflower thing, so, you know, it's all, that's great too. But I guess it, it just really shows that when we work together as a community, we take pride in our community. We work with each other, we respect each other and, and we, and we try to pull each other up and, 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 you know, as they say, you know, a rising tide lifts all boats. And so I'm very heartened to see the city kind of coming alive, the residents all working kind of together on their own little piece of Sagatuck. But when we do that, the whole town prospers, so it just was a good thing to see today. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, second.
Motion Stanton, second Baldwin, all in favor, please say yes, yes.